Hello everyone, welcome to Cities on the Frontline. My name is Francis Geschir. I'm the Practice Manager for the Urban Development and Disaster Risk Management Team of the World Bank here in East Asia. Today's Earth Day, we have a very special programme to mark this day. Lauren will present the programme in a minute. But before we start, let me, as in every Cities on the Frontline, remind everyone of the intention of this speaker series and the ground rule for the conversation today. The purpose of this seminar is to have an open and honest learning conversation between practitioners in cities and government and partners supporting these entities. The calls are not on the record, so we ask that you not attribute any comments made today unless you have the person's express permission to do so. And we're happy to help facilitating any requests you may have. We have, as always, close to 200 people registered for the call. So to facilitate the discussion, we ask that you use the Q&amp;A function to pose your questions. And please note that the recording of this session, as well as the PowerPoint presentations that will be used, will be posted online next month. Lauren, over to you.
Thank you, Francis. It's wonderful to be here with everyone on Earth Day today and in amongst our Cities on the Frontline community. And while today we're celebrating the Earth and all the incredible resources that we've been blessed with as her inhabitants, I also want to acknowledge the reason we began this series of virtual convenings, which was the COVID-19 crisis and exchanging knowledge about how cities can respond. And that still rages on. So many of our friends and colleagues, and perhaps some of you included on the line tonight, are in lockdown and worried about the spread of the disease in your area. So please know that you're in our thoughts and prayers every day. Now, while these concerns do remain, Earth Day is really marking this year some hopeful change. And tonight, we will share Mayor Sylvester Turner from the City of Houston's message launching the official agenda that he has as Chairman of the Board for Resilient Cities Network. Now, the mayor's agenda calls for immediate investment in resilient, climate-ready infrastructure that is equitable and produces green jobs in cities around the world. It's an action agenda, and we'll be inviting all of you to join in implementing. Our Chief Resilience Officer from Houston, Marissa Aho, will be here to share more live. And along with this announcement, we are thrilled to be hosting Glasgow City Council Leader Susan Aiken, who will speak to us about how we advance concrete actions around the world and also featuring experience from her city, both in the run-up to COP26, which Glasgow will be hosting this November. We'll also hear from Sami Waba on the implications of this agenda broadly for the World Bank and in developing countries. So before we begin, I will share a little bit more about our wonderful speakers that we have lined up to address to you on this very special Earth Day. So Mayor Sylvester Turner, Chairman of our Cities Board, is serving his second four-year term as Houston's mayor. And in this role, he's managing many challenges facing the nation's fourth-largest city and was responsible for launching Houston's first resilience strategy and climate action plan, committing Houston to act as a leader in the global mission of building urban resilience and the energy transition. He is also a trustee of the US Conference of Mayors and serves on the Audit and Finance Committee of the Chair of the Climate Mayors and a member of C40 and Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy and Vice President of the African American Mayors Association. As a lifelong resident of Houston, you will be able to see his passion about his city and building equitable communities and responding to the climate crisis in his message tonight. We'll then hear from Council Leader Susan Aiken, who has been the leader of Glasgow City Council since May 2017. And in her work, she has really strived to provide equal pay and justice for thousands of women across the city. And she was awarded for this work, an award for Scottish Local Government as Politician of the Year. Under her leadership, Glasgow has been named the host for COP26 and a global green city and European Capital of Sport for 2023. Marissa Aho from the City of Houston will speak to us. She is Houston's first Chief Resilience Officer for Mayor Sylvester Turner, and she previously served as Los Angeles's first Chief Resilience Officer for Mayor Eric Garcetti and makes her network's only CRO squared, having prepared and released two resilient strategies for major cities in the US. And her efforts to advance resilience in practice include many different implementation efforts. And if anyone's dialing in from LA, you might remember her work on fortifying water infrastructure or the release of the Shake Alert LA earthquake early warning. And then we will hear from Sami Waba, who's Global Practice Leader at the World Bank and has a portfolio of close to 30 billion in commitments and investment projects. He's held a number of urban development roles at the World Bank, including being Sector Leader in Brazil and Head of Urban and Disaster Risk Management for Africa. So we're very fortunate to count him as a member of our Cities Board of Directors as well. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce our next speaker, City Council Leader Susan Aiken.
Thank you very much, Lauren. And a good afternoon from Scotland, from Glasgow in Scotland, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here and an honour to be invited to take part in this Earth Day event and to be able to collaborate with peers across the world on this day, which of course we hope will be a significant staging post on our road to a safer, greener and more just planet. So yes, as Lauren said, I'm speaking today as leader of the host city of COP26, Glasgow, a relatively small city in global terms on the fringes of Northern Europe. But we like to think of ourselves as being at the centre of the universe all the time. And I suppose for the next few months, as we go up to COP26, that moment, which will be so pivotal for the future of our planet, for our communities, that we are at the centre of attention for that time. So I'd like to detail some of our role on the frontline of the climate emergency. And maybe start just by staking our own little claim on Earth Day, because one of the event's key founders, which was over 50 years ago now, was the renowned landscape architect and environmentalist professor Ian McHarg. And for those of you who don't know him, Ian McHarg was a pioneer of ecological planning. He spent much of his working life at the University of Pennsylvania. And his philosophy of designing with nature had a huge impact on planning in the US and indeed much further afield. And back in 1970, he helped organise, and I believe was himself a star turn on the very first Earth Day. And McHarg was Scottish, born by the River Clyde, the river that runs through and has shaped the city of Glasgow and the communities round about it. And he was defined and his philosophy was defined by the heavy industry that surrounded him and the really deep physical and social scars that it created, which we live with in Glasgow to this day. And his career in many ways was a response to that environment that shaped those years and the legacies of them that we still are living with and responding to. So there's something, I think, pleasingly circuitous that just six months away from McHarg's home city hosting a defining event for our planet, the Earth Day is pivotal in shaping our transition to a better world. And many decades since he first defined and promoted them, McHarg's ideas about the importance of place and the positive impact of nature on our built environment have never been more urgent than they are now. And I hope that Ian McHarg would have approved of the partnership that Glasgow has developed in recent months on the road to COP with Pittsburgh, another city that he knew very well, not solely due to our shared history of steel and ships, of industrial decline and then re-emergence, but also because of the common purpose that we as cities are forging for our futures. And as Mayor Turner said absolutely correctly, cities are critical in the response to the climate emergency. It is us who will shape the solutions. And recognition of that basis of that is the basis for the real willingness to collaborate, a tangible willingness that's all very evident among cities globally in our current moment. Cities might be where often the greatest challenges in the way of achieving carbon neutrality lie, but they're also where the greatest gains will be made. And similarly, as we emerge from the global pandemic that Lauren rightly referred to earlier with a commitment to social and economic renewal, it's cities that offer the greatest opportunities in that respect as well. So here in my own country in Scotland, Scotland as a nation has some of the most ambitious net zero targets of any nation in the world, but we are not going to be able to deliver them without the lead of its biggest city, its economic and innovation powerhouse, Glasgow. So while Scotland's national target for reaching net zero is 2045, here in Glasgow, we've set a target of 2030. But also the deep-rooted social challenges, many of them which are a hangover from our high-carbon past. And that relationship between the national and the city is replicated right across our planet, whether it is in Houston, in Kuala Lumpur, whether it's here in Europe. The challenges from these great heat maps of human activity that we call cities are identical in many ways. And the kinds of green infrastructure projects, that climate-neutral infrastructure that Mayor Turner talked about, is also common in many ways to what we need to achieve. The kinds of investments that we need to make are in common across cities across the world, and we know what they are. We know that we need to decarbonise heat or cooling, depending on which part of the world you're in and what your climate is like. Here in Scotland, it's very much heating that we're interested in. We very seldom have to cool our homes and our environment, it has to be said. But we need to decarbonise the way we either heat or cool our homes and our industrial premises. We need to decarbonise transport. It's about sustainable waste management. It's about mitigation and adaptation of, for example, flood risk, a particular issue in a waterfront city like Glasgow. It's about developing urban nature-based solutions of the kind that Ian McHarg was a pioneer of. It's about identifying and then mobilising renewable energy sources in our cities. And it's about an economic transition as well, leaving behind the high-carbon jobs of the past in order to identify the skills and the jobs of the green jobs of the future that Mayor Turner talked about. And crucially within that, it is about ensuring a just transition. There is a real risk that the pace and scale of the transition that we need to deliver if we are to meet the ambitions set out in the Paris Agreement could be regressive in a whole number of ways. You know, we can think of just a few examples. For example, if there's too much of a concentration on electric vehicle charging points for private vehicles rather than over public transport, if we don't ensure that renewable energy sources are also affordable energy sources. And we know that a lot of those high-carbon jobs that we need to transition away from are also in the lowest income sectors. So we need to have a plan to make sure that that transition is a just transition and that we don't leave citizens behind and that social equity and climate justice go hand in hand. So among our many responsibilities as COP26 host in Glasgow is that the leadership of our peer cities is acknowledged, that the voices of the cities and their citizens are heard amid that international focus on nation-states. Because it is absolutely true to say that while nation-states pledge, it's cities that deliver. And a central message that's being heard across the world right now, I think, is that COP26 has to be the COP of action, that needs to go beyond policy and targets and on to the hard practicalities of achieving net zero. And the kind of strategies that Mayor Turner was talking about are emblematic and typical of the kind of work that's being done and the leadership that's being shown in cities across the world, who in many respects are on to thinking and delivering on those hard practicalities, while nation-states are still thinking about targets. And if COP26 is to be the COP of action, then we need to ensure that the role of cities is not only recognised, but that it's resourced. The next decade is going to be absolutely vital in terms of delivering the interventions necessary for transition for that modern economy and for a healthier, more resilient society. But climate justice and indeed sustainable social equity comes at a considerable cost. We are talking about requirement to rebuild our cities really. So that all of the systems on which we depend, that I've already talked about, from energy to food, housing to transport, are decarbonised. And with the best will in the world, we can't rely on national governments alone to resource this. Cities need their own levers. So the conversations around the financing of transition, I think certainly in the UK, are still very much in their infancy, but they are moving at pace. And we've seen the global financial shocks of the past decade and the worldwide scale of the transition that's needed is definitely shifting the thinking within financial institutions. There might still be a bit of a disconnect, I think, between the values and the needs of local democracies and global finance. But I think that that disconnect and that gulf is narrowing all the time and that our interests are becoming increasingly aligned and that cities are increasingly viewed as secure investments. And many of us do have strong track records in working with finance to shape our cities and their needs and their challenges, and we can display commitment to long-term whole systems change. And in the past few weeks, I've been lucky to be part of commencing and progressing conversations in the UK with representatives from city governments, our partner government in the City of Bristol in the south of England, who we're working with closely on this, along with experts in international development, the financial sector, including the World Bank indeed, and philanthropy on the challenge of financing that green and just future. Those conversations will be widened out in the months ahead to flesh out the kind of specific projects that our cities require to adapt and to become that resilient, climate-neutral, sustainable city of the future. And I'll not go into all the detail of those. We'll maybe have time to pick up on some of those in the Q&amp;A. But crucially, we need to ensure that these projects are fundable propositions and that if need be, that we work together across cities to scale up those propositions to make them more attractive to investors. There's a huge opportunity here, I think, for financial institutions, for national governments and for city leaderships to make sure that we work together to make COP26 the place where we address head-on the issue of how we resource transition. By that time, within our very distinct national contexts, cities and the networks that we operate in really need to have a very clear idea of what we need and the mechanisms that can deliver that change. So as I've said, COP26 can't solely be about another target or even about values and ambitions. It has to be about delivering change, delivering justice, sharing knowledge and skills. And as I think Mayor Turner illustrated, really, really powerful in his contribution, the price of not doing that is so much greater than the price of doing it, the cost of doing it now. The cost now is enormous, but if we leave it, it will be even greater. And it will be greater in the price of tragedy, of the loss of human life and livelihoods. So we need to nail down how we are going to do this, how cities with that critical role that we all agree that they have can take the practical steps necessary to secure the future of our planet. So we've got six months to go to COP26. Our window may be small, but the opportunity and the ramifications are huge. And I look forward to getting into some more detail on that in our Q&amp;A. Thank you very much for inviting me today and thanks for listening.
Thank you so much, Susan. So well said on many fronts, and I know we'll have much more to dive into in the Q&amp;A. Next, I'm going to turn the microphone and video over to Marissa Aho, our Chief Resilience Officer in Houston for a response.
Thanks, Lauren. So that is a hard act or axe to follow. I just want to quickly be able to underscore a few of the topics that came up. And I think one is really around how we're in pretty good alignment about the what these days. But we really have this opportunity, like Leader Aiken was saying, about the action and the how, and being able to show momentum and show real projects on the ground and being able to focus on implementation. And so the chair's agenda is really that action-oriented, implementation-oriented way to do so. And then next, the intersectionality of all of this work. And it's really wonderful to see how folks are looking at solving all of these challenges at the same time. And the chair's agenda also really focuses on doing just that. I talk about solving for more than one thing daily. And in Houston specifically, we're looking at equity, health, climate, the built environment and the economy in everything that we do to focus on implementing resilience and that transformational change that Mayor Turner is encouraging us to do on the ground here as well. And then finally, just to underscore what Leader Aiken was saying and what Mayor Turner had said in the video, you know, the chair's agenda, you know, infrastructure for people, climate readiness for people, equitable outcomes delivered for people, and producing green jobs for people and our flora and fauna friends. But I think really looking at how do we create the urgency to do the transformational change that we all know we need, but it's for our residents, it's for the folks who are on the margins, it's for the folks who continue to get hit, particularly in Houston, where we've had seven declared disasters in six years. We know that our most vulnerable people are the ones that really need this change and really need it now. And so I'm very excited, looking forward to working across the network, learning from other cities, like Leader Aiken was saying, that's the way that we advance this work so quickly. And I look forward to the next steps of really assessing what the network is already doing and then engaging with the existing communities of practice and finally mobilising and getting it done.
Thank you, Marissa. That was very clear. We've got to get to work. The reason we need to get to work is because we need to resource this agreed agenda. And as you always do in our meetings and all of the work, reminding us that this is about people and creating those jobs for vulnerable residents, creating the kinds of infrastructure that protects those vulnerable in our communities. So I'm sure we'll come back to that and there'll be questions about that in the next section.
Lauren, I guess I'll jump in. You've talked a lot, so maybe it's my time to jump in and you can rest a little bit. And I'd like to go back to Marissa, because I found the speech by Mayor Turner very inspiring. And in fact, I think the question that everybody has is, all right, yeah, we all agree, we want to do this, focus on equitable, resilient, climate-ready infrastructure, we want to create green job priorities. Can you tell us a little bit about concrete action and use and how do you go about it? How do you combine all these elements and align them towards results in all these indicators?
Sure. Well, first, I want to acknowledge that it's not easy, right? If it was easy, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So I think the chair's agenda is both reflective of what we're trying to advance in Houston, but also very aspirational of what we need to do more of, both globally and locally. Some of what we are working on, apologies, it's always busy around here, include working with all of our departments on how to desilo some of these conversations and work cross-departmentally. And so we have department resilience officers in every single department that I have the honour of working with in order to not think of, you know, embedding resilience as a new thing. It's really about how we take what we're already doing and look at it through this lens and try to integrate it into what we're doing. Another example where we've been very successful is looking at the Harvey recovery programmes that we have, Hurricane Harvey, the recovery funding, we're embedding resilience into the projects that we're moving forward from housing to infrastructure that includes nature-based solutions to stacking detention with recreation and being able to build back better and address the challenges that we're dealing with in real time due to climate change through our recovery efforts. The same is true with our COVID recovery efforts. We've had an ability to embed the resilience lens and the equity lens into how we move those things forward.
Thanks, Marissa. I actually want to extend Francis's question to you, City Leader Aiken, about those actions. And also, you highlighted the need to really work with investors to leverage that experience in finance. How have you worked within the council to really bring along investment communities, convince folks to invest differently and perhaps even brought along colleagues who may have been sceptical about this agenda?
But I think it's relatively early days for us. And I think a lot of cities don't necessarily have a huge amount of experience of working at the kind of scale of investment that's going to be required, where we're talking about billions, tens of billions of dollars to finance some of this infrastructure. We're perhaps often more used to working in the millions. You know, we build schools, we're going to have to move to building, you know, in Glasgow, a tidal barrage in our river, for example. And I think, you know, there's a point in there, a crucial point about equity as well in that while cities have to be enabled and given the levers to attract this investment, city residents can't be expected to bear the cost of borrowing on their own. So national governments have to step up and back cities on financing, the financing, if you like, because obviously, investment has a bringing investment in also has a cost a lot of the time. So what we are trying to do is this kind of, and we're working with other cities in the UK to really get a sense of how we do this and how we can scale up, is having conversations first of all with the investment community to understand what their needs are. And one of the biggest things we've learned is that they want big, they're looking for scaled up investment. So we're like, right, okay, so we need to work, you know, a city like Glasgow, the UK, this is common, outside of London, the UK cities aren't really enormous. Glasgow is the fourth biggest city in the UK and we're 630,000. So there aren't many big sort of mega cities in the UK. So we need to think, okay, do we work together with a city of similar size like Manchester, for example, to look at heat networks and how we can have that investable infrastructure proposition. But I think also the other crucial part of it is not just us getting our heads around what the investment community need from us, but what Marissa talked about, ensuring that we don't lose sight of the things that we want to do for our citizens anyway and that we've already got in train, but actually using this as an opportunity to accelerate that progress and accelerate those social justice. that progress and accelerate those social justice interventions for our citizens. And that then is a conversation with investors where we're seeking them to be activists, I suppose, in the sense that they want to be actively associated with investments which are delivering human benefit and benefit to place that is long term, that is sustainable. So it's not just give us your money and we'll build this and then thanks very much. It is about a relationship whereby we align our values as much as possible as well as the needs and expectations that both sides of that working relationship have. That's definitely a learning curve and I think it's a learning curve on both sides. But I think these conversations, like the kind of conversation that we're having today, is absolutely crucial in that where we can understand each other's mindsets and understand each other's perspectives as much as possible and then align those for delivery.
Thank you, Leader Aiken. I fully agree with you that this is learning for everyone. And it's learning at many different levels. At the World Bank, we find ourselves very much as a, very often as a broker, trying to get, to translate the language of the different pieces. But you talk a lot about scale. But there's also a question of mandate and prerogative. And I don't want to go too far from the resilience agenda, but you talk rightfully a lot about the mitigation agenda. How do we work to reduce carbon emission? I think we can all agree that maybe cities don't produce three quarter of carbon emission, but they're responsible for a big majority of carbon emission. Imagine that in Glasgow, you've done a lot already, you've been under huge pressure to do more. Can you tell us a little bit about where you've had successes within the mandate of the city? I mean, you can't control energy policy of the Scottish or even the Great Britain's government. There's things you don't control, but at the level of the cities, where have you had the biggest success? Or where do you think you can have the bigger successes?
So I think there's a couple of things in Glasgow that over quite a long period that people wouldn't necessarily see on the surface a lot of the time. We have considerably shifted from being a post industrial city with all that implies, with large parts of the city really just neglected, not just undeveloped, but undevelopable. And we have over a couple of decades now, but particularly accelerated over the past decade, really transformed a lot of that post industrial vacant and derelict land. And a lot of the investment has literally had to go underground because this land was toxic with chemicals, with things like chromium, for example, that were left over from industrial processes, now defunct industrial processes, but that we still live with. And so what you'll see in Glasgow, and it's one of the reasons why we were awarded the UN Global Green City in 2020, was that the transition that we've demonstrated from a post industrial city to a city where we are literally building new neighborhoods, primarily, but not only affordable homes, mixed tenure homes. And, you know, to go back to, I think, you know, Marissa brought this point out really well. When you're doing stuff that you want to do anyway, do it sustainably. And, you know, it's thinking about, we want to build affordable homes, so let's do it in a way that is as green and as low carbon as possible. And so we are building entire kind of urban villages of passive house developments, for example, which is about as sustainable as you can get in house building. And all of this is required to address the needs of a population who were left behind in the last transition, the transition from heavy industry. They were left behind then and they continue to suffer from that. So as we address their needs, with which they've been waiting 30, 40 years to be addressed and in many cases, these are generational issues. And we, at the same time, anticipate and work towards the coming transition, the decarbonization transition. So it's been a long process in Glasgow. I think we're now at the point where we have not left behind our post industrial past, but a lot of that, that literal under the ground infrastructure investment has taken place. And what we're now ready to do is the real green investment, the real green infrastructure that builds on all of that investment over a number of years. And, you know, my final point on this would be, what's been so important about that investment is it has been primarily from the public sector. And it's been either from ourselves as a city or collectively with our neighboring local authorities or from national governments, either in Scotland or at UK level. And there's something there which I think is really important about, for the next stage of investment as well, about us demonstrating confidence, that we demonstrated the confidence as a public authority, that we were prepared to spend our money in these places, which might otherwise have been regarded as abandoned. And I think that in demonstrating that confidence, as we go into the next transition, we're seeing again, we know that this is hard, this is going to be incredibly challenging, especially doing it within the timescales that we have set ourselves and which the planet requires us to deliver on. But if we demonstrate the confidence by going out and seeking those investments and having those plans, that's the first step in many ways, about saying we're ready to deliver, we're ready to really get going on this transition.
It is such an inspiring note to not end on, but to pledge to continue on, right? Is that signaling that we're ready? Unfortunately, as it usually does at this stage in the hour, it falls on me to wrap up this conversation. But I'm wrapping up this conversation in a very different way than we typically do because tonight was actually the launch of the Mayor's Agenda and it's an agenda for action over the next 18 months. So as Mayor Turner mentioned, there's three parts of this. There's assessing the work across our network that's advancing this agenda already. And you've heard tonight, both from City Leader Aiken and from Marissa, a bit about some of that work. The next thing that we're going to do is engage with our existing communities, programs and partners. So that means all of you on the line on further sharing knowledge to advance this agenda and then really looking at mobilizing place based resources, so connecting to those investments that need to happen at scale. So with that, I'm really asking that we continue this conversation and that it's more of a planning conversation. It's an action agenda conversation for all of us to continue to engage in. And on that note, I'm going to say that the conversation does continue. In two weeks, our next session will be on Thursday, May 6th. First Cities on the Front Line will be hosting the Earth Observatory of Singapore from Nanjing Technological University, looking at the intersectionality of climate risks, cities and equity, which will help ground the Mayor's Agenda in the reality of what's possible and what we're looking at in terms of data and risk. And at this time, I also really want to thank all of the speakers tonight, to City Leader Aiken and to Marissa for being with us live, also to Mayor Turner and to Sami for sharing their remarks via video. And with that, I'll just say, have a really meaningful Earth Day to everyone out there on the line. Be safe, be healthy and be well and see you very soon.